Go ahead and open the meeting for regular session August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. We'll start with the leaders. Official names, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is our regular session, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting's being recorded. If you have a cellphone, please put it on quiet. Put your cell phone. So I see there, is there any additions or additions to the agenda?
Yeah, I have three additions. I have road department trailer purchases, personal property tax cancellation, and an order designating a newspaper.
Okay. All right, so we'll open up our meeting with public comment. And I believe Shelley, were you wanting to introduce yourself?
I will be happy to introduce myself.
Okay.
Don't know what your procedure is.
Come on up and have a seat.
Have a seat, okay.
What's the title for you?
Entitled?
Nice. You don't mind state name?
My name is Shelley Batty. And I'm a resident of Lakeview, so Lake County. And as of a week ago today, I am the new director of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce.
All right, congratulations.
Going to be interesting times.
Yeah, good. What kind of plans you have?
Oh, I've got tons of them. I'm a unique chamber director in that in the last five or six years, every previous director has been tourism-focused or design development-focused, whereas I am a business owner in the community as well as being a tourism advocate. So I'm going to bring back that fifty-fifty balance of spending at least half my time on developing small businesses in the community, reaching out to the members of the business community to make sure that they network and get to know each other, advocating to the county for what the small businesses need, while at the same time being the cheerleader for everything Lake County tourism development-related.
Excellent. Well, good. So obviously, this is a busy time of year for the chamber.
This is a very busy time of year for the chamber. I did my first community connection yesterday and realized I already have five events scheduled in the next three months. So I'm happy to tell you about any and all of them, but don't want to take your time since I'm not technically on your agenda. Although that's likely to change.
Well, the first one is Roundup.
Roundup. Fair Roundup, the parade. And you're going to see a lot of information, like the business community has jumped into high gear since we were not able to get up at carnival. So we're going to have bounce houses and water slides and balloons and face painting and tons of stuff in the same location the carnival is usually located, for all the kids, and it's all going to be free. And you'll be hearing more and more and seeing more and more of that on Facebook over the next week.
Pretty fun, okay, Ty. You heard it here first.
I didn't speak funnel case. That's, the food vendors are still here, it's just the carnival that wasn't able to come. So we have lots of carnival stuff going on. And then followed up almost immediately by September is, no, that's September. In October is the annual eclipse. And it's going to be thirteenth and fourteenth, as if you don't already know. The VOM Forest Service and Ski Hill are doing a big event at the Ski Hill the night before the thirteenth. Then the eclipse itself happens at nine AM on the fourteenth. Four minutes and twenty-seven seconds of a ring of fire, which is a really spectacular eclipse. And we'll be doing a festival to celebrate the light coming back on afterwards. That will hopefully include a pancake breakfast, some live music, some dinner booths and things like that. Until noon, and then at noon, you can go to the altar for the open mic for the Cowboy Poetry Gathering.
Fantastic, good, yeah, excellent. Do you have an assistant?
Not yet.
Not yet. That's a prayer, does he defer to him?
I think that my priority is getting a membership. Because the membership year goes from July into June. And because of all the turnover and the churn, membership records and notifications haven't yet gone out. I am printing them in my office while at the same time I'm sitting here. And so you'll all be here in front of me because you're still the chamber members.
That's it?
Thank you.
I'm sure we can invite you back.
Absolutely.
You've got a little more time to...
My plan is to be here in person as often as is humanly possible, just so that I can hear what your priorities are and work in whatever plans the chamber has going, and so that I'm available to answer questions or be a reference and resource for you.
Yeah, I'm really excited about it, your new position, and really wishing you the very best. And just after, after Fair and Roundup and everything is over, I think it'll be a much better time to kind of get into things. Would love to see any plans you have for work on the Northern End and going up north Paisley.
Well, I am disheartened to look at our chamber membership and see how few people are from North County, how few people are from anywhere outside of the town, and this is the Lake County Chamber. So my board is already on notice that I will be a road warrior. And my goal is to have a face-to-face meeting with every business in the county over the next twelve months. And I plan to start with the North County Chamber of Commerce.
Excellent, sounds good.
Yeah, I think there's some bridges need to be built in that area, and it's going to be my goal to make sure that people know that I at least made that attempt and that my door is open to North County.
That'll be great, that sounds good. If you need any help at all, please contact me.
Oh, you will be hearing from me, I promise.
I'm only saying that not to say it publicly in a meeting, that a number of businesses on the North End have been really wanting some activity as far as the chamber goes on the North End. And they've been wanting to put together some business meetings for the local businesses. They'd like to facilitate a dinner at some point and really bring everyone together and talk about, you know, the growth of the community that they're seeing up there and see what they can do together.
I cannot wait to talk to you about that and any names or phone numbers of specific people that you know that are interested in that, so that I know that they're the first people I need to contact.
Absolutely.
And one of the changes is Chamber Chatter, which has been gone for four or five months, will be back effective the twenty-first of August. And it's going to be a little bit different in that I'm going to do it out in the county. If you see my office in chatter, that will be a rare event. I'm going to be out where everyone else is at, kind of doing what everyone else is doing.
Looking forward to it. And the chamber director for La Pine, actually.
Is a friend of mine.
She is a wonderful...
I've already made the call.
Yes, that's great, fantastic. She has, she's done a tremendous job of just trying to help a lot of businesses up in the North End of the county. She loves Lake County as a whole.
When, when La Pine did their tourism studio.
Yes.
Which they did a year before Lake County did theirs. My husband and I were the expert facilitators who came to help them through that process. So I have really great conversation and connections to La Pine. And I plan to do a lot of reciprocal work with all of the regions directly around us.
Yeah, La Pine, they're one of those chambers that are doing it right.
Yep.
They're very active.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Shelley.
You're very welcome.
Congratulations on your position.
Thank you.
Will you look forward to visiting a few more?
Oh, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we go with Kevin next? We have road department trailer purchases, plural.
I have to add this for each one of your, I'll tell you why in a second. The actual first, we'll talk about this low trail trailer first. This quote that I sent you first actually doesn't reflect the true cost of what we actually paid for it. We did little further negotiations and was able to get it for even a better price. So this, this version that I just gave you is actually what, what the, you know, the payment was in this, in this ratification. This trailer, as I said in the, in the notes, allows for just more mobilization of us hauling equipment back and forth. Glass beads, pink totes, our lighting equipment, skid steer attachments and so on and so forth. We travel back and forth a lot between here and Christmas Valley. And we have pickups that we should be moving equipment and making things as efficient as possible. This will allow us to do that.
Yeah.
So you saved another thousand and fifty bucks.
Is that what the difference is? Yes, another twenty-four, six, twenty-three, five, fifty, yes, sir, thousand and fifty. We were able to further negotiate the price of that trailer.
What was the negotiation on that? Was it just...
I can't give all my secrets out.
You were careful.
This, this trailer, this trailer came from the same place that we bought the other tilt-deck trailer from in a dealership in Kansas, and so they were here to be present with us.
What, this is a hundred and two by thirty-foot tandem low goose neck?
Yep, it's actually a tilt...
With a dovetail?
Yep, it's actually a tilt, a power-assisted dovetail, so...
Heavier stuff.
Yep, we had, we move our road brooms around a lot too. The brooms have the belly on them, and they are somewhat, they're not terrible, but they're somewhat problematic to move easily because the belly drags on everything. This trailer here, you actually drive up on it and it'll lift the broom right up when you drive on. We can move them both at the same time, makes things a lot more mobile and adds some efficiencies to what we're doing, so. Instead of taking two or three pieces.
Like double axle?
Yeah, yeah, it's a tandem axle, dual, dual tandem axle. Yep.
Okay, good. Let's preview the price.
This other, do you have any questions about that one? This other trailer, we talked, I briefed my liaison on this before we went ahead and moved with this one here. We, was it last year or maybe the fall before? I don't remember the exact date. We surplus the trailer to the fire.
RPA, that was the fall before.
Okay. We had a lowboy trailer that was just too short for the equipment that we had. But it worked out excellent for the rural fire. They had specific piece equipment, and they ended up borrowing from us a lot of the time, which benefited them. But they had some dollars, I don't remember exactly why, but they had some dollars for equipment. And so we surplus that trailer to them, but it left us short at the north end of the county. And we have since been looking for a trailer to fit that bill. This TK fifty, this tilt-deck trailer offers us everything we need to be able to move our loader around to the different pits and so forth. The comparative costs, as I noted there in the summary, are from what I got from new prices. This trailer is like new. It's a 2018 model that was a contractor that didn't fit their needs, and so they traded it in. And I was lucky enough to see it and be able to move on it. This, this trailer will be very good for, it'll be in Christmas Valley the majority of the time. And it'll, it'll allow Tyler to be more mobile with a lot of what he's having to do, move the loader around in the backhoe and so forth.
So this was actually the trailer that brought you to Kansas, so to speak. And the prices for it new, just for the record, on our sheet were ranging from fifty-eight thousand to seventy-five thousand dollars. And you acquired it for thirty?
It was, it was priced at thirty-two. We, we negotiated to thirty thousand, but then we also were, were able to, we, we put this trailer that we're talking about on the last trailer that we just talked about and got both of them at the same time, yes.
One trip.
So you could, if you look at the quotes from the first trailer and you consider the dollars there, we saved all in one trip. We, we saved a significant amount of money and we're able to acquire trailers that we need. So it was a good, all the dollars spelled correctly, if you will. Do you have any questions about that one?
Just a big old fantastic, I don't know.
We tried.
All right, let's, how about we ratify the TK fifty tilt deck?
Okay. I can make a motion to ratify the purchase of the 2018 TK fifty tilt deck for a total fiscal impact of thirty thousand dollars.
I'm going to second it to approve the ratification, purchase of the TK fifty tilt deck equipment for a fiscal impact of thirty thousand dollars. Any final discussion? Hearing now, we'll proceed to vote. All with a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up is the tandem low-pro goose neck with hydraulic dub.
I didn't put, sorry to interrupt you, I didn't put that on there, but that's a 2023 trailer. That's a new, that's a new trailer.
This one or the last one?
The one you're talking about right now is the brand new one.
So I'll make a motion to accept the ratification of thirty-two-foot tandem low-profile 2023 goose neck for a total fiscal impact of twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty.
Second.
So I'm going to second it to approve a one-hundred, one-hundred and two-inch by thirty-two-foot tandem low-pro goose neck with a hydraulic dovetail for a fiscal impact of twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Any final discussion? All with a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Right, anything else?
I didn't ask to be on the agenda for an update, but if, if I had three minutes, I'd give you a quick and dirty of what we're doing right now and what we'll be doing in the next month. So we finished up our oil and chips, our fog seal in Silver Lake, all those roads are completed. We finished up yesterday and a little bit this morning, our, all of our line painting. We were able to get closer to our goal of having a three-year cycle on these routes instead of just kind of by evaluations so that we, we have a refreshed look on our roads as far as the yellow and white paint. The preparations for the next couple days, and I'll say weeks, will be for the flat project on Cottonwood, which should start on the eighteenth of September. So that'll be a ten or eleven-day project to install that aggregate once it is produced. And those, we've already had, I think, I think I brought that contract in before previously, so. We'll be working towards that to be able to get that project done before October. And that's what we're working on. We're also running the Van Lee machine right now in North Lake, so on Frederick's route. And we'll probably be running that on and off as personnel and time allows until Mother Nature tells me that we can't run it there anymore.
Yeah, that's fantastic. There was one other thing, though, that you left out. The, you guys had some leftover material after doing the bare flat road and working in Silver Lake. And you paved, or chip sealed and oiled a new helipad for the Silver Lake Fire Hall. So they have a new landing pad, and it looks fantastic, nice and black. And I guess the four-H students will be painting the actual pad.
Yep, the four-H, the four-H kids will paint it, but I don't know exactly when.
No, yeah, that's being coordinated elsewhere, but yeah, it looks great. It was really breaking out, and you guys went above and beyond even.
We did, we patched a lot in there by hand also. We can, we can use a distributor and mix. Basically, we, we hand-mixed it right on the ground, and we patched as, as many flaws that were in that, in that parking lot as were possible. So we tried to make as many improvements there as we could.
Yeah, I, we, I know they really, really appreciated it. I spent a good portion of the day blowing out all those cracks and everything, trying to make it so that you guys could work in there. You guys even went outside of the footprint a little bit and just to cover some of those other defects. And it's very much appreciated.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ellen.
All right, next up, let's do the radio repeater purchases for law enforcement. So we're going to break from this yesterday. Mr. Bean went out and found reduced pricing for mobile and mobile radios for the new vehicles. And for three vehicles, for total sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. This used to be part of the package deal when you bought a law enforcement vehicle, and it's since been...
Parceled out.
Taken out. Because of the cost and everything else.
He really has done a great job going above and beyond trying to find any kind of cost reduction. And he's evaluated every single thing as much as he can. And, you know, he saved twenty-one thousand dollars on the outfit, which is fantastic that he took the time to make sure he was doing the best he could for Lake County's taxpayers. And then he also found efficiencies with his radios. You guys have a chance to give him a pat on the back, he's pretty humble about it.
It is very much appreciated.
Yeah.
So if you notice, the subject says radio and repeater purchases. So that quote, that number I gave you was for the radios, the repeaters in the back of the information there. Seventeen thousand total fiscal impact is thirty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Is that correct, Molly?
Thirty-two thousand, no?
Thirty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
Do we need to do these separate, since they are two different?
You should be able to just do it together, yeah? You want, just fist into the radio.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the Motorola Motorola and Day Wireless for the radios and installation for a total cost of thirty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll second that motion. Oh, just, just to also include the repeaters in that.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's been noted, seconded to approve the Motorola solutions for the mobile radios and the repeaters and services installation from Day Wireless for a total fiscal impact of thirty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Any other discussion? All with a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. Lake County Senior Citizens Association Provider Services Agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-five biennium.
This is an agreement with Lake County Senior Citizens Association. They are a contracted provider that we pass money through essentially from Bodot through our various grants that we receive. And this just spells out the terms and expectations that Lake County hopes to have delivered. It follows FTA and state guidelines.
And we have a total grant dollar number?
This amount was roughly distributed equally to both of our contracted providers by the Transportation Advisory Committee. Sorry.
Is it the two-thirty-two, five-thirty-two?
So...
STIF.
That is for STIF funding, two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, five-hundred, thirty-two dollars and sixty cents for STIF funding, which is State Transportation Improvement Fund. The STIF and STIF have been combined to this biennium, so that'll be a fund change. And then they will be receiving fifty-eight thousand dollars in fifty-three-ten federal funding.
And both of those are for bienniums?
Yeah.
Yeah, so half each year. All right. I can go ahead and make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Lake County Senior Citizens Association Provider Service Agreement for the 2023 to 25 biennium, resulting in pass-through dollars for the STIF of twenty-three, two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and sixty cents for the biennium, along with additional grant dollars amounting to fifty-eight thousand dollars over the biennium.
All right, do we have a second?
Can I second?
Okay. It's been noted and seconded to approve the grant for Provider Services Agreement for Lake County for the twenty-three, twenty-five biennium for the Senior Citizens Association. Fiscal impact of two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and sixty cents, as well as an additional fifty-eight thousand over the twenty-three, twenty-five biennium. Any final discussion? All with a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next one is the Inter Court Family Center. This is also a similar agreement?
Mm-hmm, very similar. The amounts are a little different. It's fifty-three-ten funding, which is for elderly and disabled people only, will total sixty-two thousand dollars, sixty-two thousand and sixty-four dollars for the year, for the biennium, excuse me. And the total for STIF is two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty dollars and sixty cents for the biennium.
Two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And what?
One-hundred-and-sixty-eight, sixty. It's on the first pair, too.
It's like right center, first pair.
Put my hand on it. Thank you, Molly. Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the agreement with the Inter Court Family Center for a fiscal impact of sixty-two thousand, sixty-four for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five biennium. And two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight and sixty cents of STIF funding for biennium.
I'll second that motion.
It's been noted and seconded to approve Provider Services Agreement for Services provided in Lake County for the sum of sixty-two thousand, sixty-four dollars of fifty-three-ten services, the biennium, and also two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents of STIF dollars as well for the biennium of twenty-three, twenty-five. Any other discussion? All with a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have foreclosure publication permission. Is this the actual?
We need to designate a newspaper of record for the publishing of the twenty-two foreclosure list. Is that right?
Oh, yeah, there it is, okay, we're designing this. Okay, this is traditionally banned in the Lake County Examiner. This again selects Lake County Examiner for this work to be done.
We often publish things in the other local periodicals and stuff too, but officially it has to be in a newspaper record and get an affidavit for ORS.
I'll make a motion in a matter of designation on the newspaper for publication for the Lake County foreclosure list and I will request the Lake County Examiner be that publication.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to designate a newspaper for publication of the twenty-twenty-three Lake County foreclosure list and that is the Lake County Examiner that will be published. Any other discussion? On the.
I've already taken care of that.
Okay.
I caught it.
Okay, got the year changed.
Sorry.
I have nothing. Okay, proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up, from Mr. Knowles, is the summary of Lake County Property, Personal Property Tax Cancellation. For consideration of the motion. Do you mind summarizing this, Ms. Lozly?
I'll do it. Assistant Knowles has deemed these accounts all uncollectible. All of the personal property has been destroyed and therefore there's no property to collect on.
Or they deceased.
Or they're deceased too. I think the total amount is eleven hundred dollars approximately.
Eleven twenty-six eighty-four. Okay.
All right, I guess let's just make a motion accepting the list.
As presented?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the list and petition in a matter of cancellation of delinquent personal property taxes with a total amount of eleven thousand twenty-six, excuse me, one thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the Personal Property Tax Cancellation for one thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents as presented. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Professional Services Agreement.
I made a small mistake in April. I didn't put this on the regular session agenda. And we talked about it in the work session and then we signed everything in the Department of Christmas Valley, but we never actually made a motion on this. So if we could ratify this, it would be fantastic.
This is our agreement with our county council.
I'll accept the ratification of the Professional Service Agreement between Lake County and Paige Solly, our county council.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the ratification of our Professional Services Agreement with Paige Solly serving as our county council. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, meeting minutes.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August first, two thousand twenty-three work session and August second, two thousand twenty-three regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the August first, two thousand twenty-three work session and the August second, two thousand twenty-three regular session minutes as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Any other liaison updates today? Hearing none. Anything else to the order?
Um, Senator Benz will be here August twenty-third.
Congressman.
Congressman.
Yeah, and that'll be, we'll be meeting with him at, was it ten o'clock?
Just you guys.
Yeah, just us and then.
The town hall will be at eleven.
At eleven downstairs in the community hall, in the memorial hall. I will be up here for that meeting because we are having an EOCO meeting with Gobi and a chip discussion. So we're going to have the CEO of Gobi here along with her staff. And we'll be having lunch up here as well, lunch provided. So if the town hall ends, you guys are also more than welcome to join and just sit in. But we'll be having dinner with that crew the night before. That should be on you guys' calendars.
Also, are we doing that?
Yeah.
Our next meeting is supposed to be September fifth and sixth, which is a Tuesday, the fifth after Labor Day. I'd like to see if you guys would be interested in doing a combined session and moving into the sixth. Yes, please.
A motion.
Census wins. We will have a combined session on September sixth for our next meeting. All right, anything else? Thank you, Chair.